Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, welcome, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started to the December nineteenth. Four P M. Work session. I let the reflect record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Blair and Chair Trubek, Chair Trubek should be joining us shortly. I haven't heard from Bart. Anybody, I don't know. Hopefully it should be should be here soon. Uh, so we'll go ahead and begin with the agenda review for tonight's city council meeting at six P M. Uh, roll call and opening ceremony. And then we will move into approval of minutes. Uh, hopefully everyone's had a chance to review the minutes there. And then we will, the next section is recognitions. We have recognitions of our outgoing council members, Councilmember Luis Lopez and Ben Nadolsky. And then recognition for our outgoing mayor, Mayor Caldwell, who should be joining us, I believe. Um, and then, uh, we have the consent items. Any question or discussion on on the council rules and norms as we've discussed over the last little while? And then our last item of business on the agenda is the prior to the public comments. And comments from mayor and council members is the reports from administration, the Ogden Airport Advisory Committee, uh, ordinance amendment. Any questions or discussion on that item? Alrighty. Sounds good. Welcome, Bart. Um, okay, so we will at this time, uh, begin our work session. Uh, the the first item. We have is the community business survey results and Sarah Meese will join us to begin with, and we have online. Uh, Matt Hillburn, who will also be presenting. Um, I think also David Sawyer is. Who do we have? Oh, there we are, Sarah. I thought I saw David earlier, maybe not, but anyway, okay. Thank you. We'll turn the time over to you, Sarah.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Good afternoon. Um, we're joining you today to share the results of a community business survey that we did with E D C Utah, uh, last summer, summer of twenty twenty three. And we see this as a really good tool just to get kind of a general pulse on how businesses are doing in our community. What are things they value about being here? What are some challenges that they're facing? Um, and just for a little bit of background, um, E D C Utah is a statewide economic development organization. Uh, they lead corporate recruitment projects for the state. Um, but they also work to facilitate the growth of existing businesses here in Utah. And they support local and regional economic development efforts throughout the state. Ogden City has been a longtime member of E D C Utah. Uh, we work with them very regularly on recruitment projects. Um, so that includes everything from submitting proposals to hosting site visits. Um, and then we also participate in a number of the events that E D C Utah coordinates throughout the year. Um, that includes site selector events where we bring site selectors out and introduce them to Utah and the communities here. Uh, trade shows and then various training and networking opportunities. Um, so one of the member services that E D C Utah offers is an annual business survey. And that's a tool that's meant to help communities understand, uh, the opportunities and challenges that are facing their businesses. Um, so we did this with E D C Utah last summer. And we plan to run the survey annually moving forward so that we can better track those trends over time. And so I'm very pleased to introduce Matt Hillburn, who's a research consultant with E D C Utah, and he's joining us online to take us through the survey results.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate that. It's really great to be with all of you. Uh, Ogden City, as Sarah said, is a longtime member of E D C Utah, and we value our partnership with. With the city and all those that we get to engage with, uh, in the city. And, uh, really appreciate that. This is, this is one of the great ways that we like to be able to engage with you is to provide this survey. And so, uh, I'll, I'll jump in and I, I will, uh, warn you, I am, uh, getting over a bit of a, uh, a cold, so I'll have a little bit of a cough and so, uh, we'll, but we'll try to make it through. To get started, this community business survey is something that we began, uh, probably about close to eight years ago now. We do this in multiple communities across the state. And the objective, as Sarah indicated, is to understand how the businesses within the community are doing. How they're feeling about the city, what what the city or the state could be doing to better support them. And this is all part of the goal of helping to ensure that we can retain the businesses that we have and and love so much in our communities. So we'll start with a brief review of the objectives, a brief review of the the research methodology. We'll highlight, uh, a little bit about the companies who responded to the survey, and then we'll get to the actual findings. So number one, we want to understand what is important for the businesses. What what is it that they need? Uh, out of the community and how do they feel Ogden is doing across those factors? Excuse me. We also want to understand the challenges and barriers to growth that these businesses are are facing. Their general sentiment toward the city and doing business in the city. And then, of course, at at E D C Utah, we have a vested interest, as I'm sure you do as well, in understanding their expansion and relocation plans. How many companies in Ogden are planning on growing and expanding in the next twelve months? And are they considering Ogden? Or are they considering expanding somewhere else? Are there any flight risks that we want to be aware of? We also learned a little bit about their export, uh, uh, export mentalities and then, uh, get their attitudes towards working with local government. This is a survey that we work closely with Sarah and and David and others to get out to those, uh, businesses in the community. We are, we're at a somewhat low response rate at a hundred and twenty four. We'd like to see that number increase over time. For statistical significance, we really need a little bit of a bigger sample size than that. We, we'd like to see it hit probably closer to one fifty or so. But one hundred and twenty four businesses is a lot of businesses to get feedback from. So we're really excited for those who did respond, and we look forward to, uh, seeing that number increase over time. Here's a quick profile of the companies, uh, who responded to the survey. Eighty-five percent of them are headquartered in Ogden. And I've been in Ogden for more than ten years for for the majority of them, sixty-one percent have been there for more than ten years. And then, of course, we've got the newer startup companies and those who've been around for a little while. Most companies, as you know, are small. Uh, the majority of companies, about eighty or eighty-five percent of companies have fewer than nine employees. And we're seeing that represented here as well. This is pretty close to the Ogden distribution of companies with. The vast majority of them being just a few, uh, small people, uh, a, a few people, uh, per, per company. And then we do have, we did hear from a few of the larger companies as well. I'll move somewhat quickly just for the sake of time, but please feel free to interrupt as we go, and and we'll also have a few moments at the end to to talk about questions. We asked what industry these companies are in. Majority of them who responded are retail. We've also have professional business services, manufacturing, leisure, education, health services across the board. Heard from, uh, all different kinds of industries that are represented in Ogden. Obviously, uh, Ogden has a lot of aerospace and defense, which we hear a lot from them here at seven percent. Um, so, you know, wanting to make sure we're getting a nice variety of different kinds of industries respond. The revenue side. Again, the majority of the companies are small, under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue, all the way up to those who are doing, uh, over ten million dollars in revenue each year. Okay, let's jump right in. So what is it that businesses need? What is it that matters to them? And how is the city, city delivering on those needs? From the mouths of those businesses. Uh, this is a bit of a messy, complicated, uh, uh, matrix here, so let me just briefly explain what we're looking at. This is a one to five scale that we've zoomed in. We're looking at two point five to five. We've just zoomed in so that we can better isolate the differences. The higher a dot is up, the more important that dot is to a business. And, uh, on the, on the horizontal scale here, the farther a dot is to the right. The better the businesses are saying that Ogden City is performing across that feature. Now, none of us are surprised that, uh, businesses, uh, its taxes are very important to businesses. This is a big. Part of, uh, this is a big barrier, or in some cases, uh, you know, this is something that helps them along. And of course, they're, they're not going to be as satisfied, uh, with taxes. That's something we see in all the communities. Nobody likes paying taxes. So that's not a shock, uh, that we would see that appear, but let me just describe what this means. The upper left quadrant would be things that are very important to businesses and that they're not as happy with. We've only got one thing in this quadrant, which is taxes. So in this quadrant, we would want to either strengthen that thing, so in this case, reduce taxes. Or sometimes we would want to educate about that thing. Maybe taxes are lower in Ogden City than than other areas. And and maybe that could be something that we could teach a community, uh, uh, businesses about. The bottom left would be things that aren't as important. Um, and also that aren't, uh, that that the businesses aren't as happy with. So this might be the, the real estate and the coworking space costs. So they're pretty satisfied with it, but but we'd like them to be a little bit happier with that. But it's also not critical to every business. Every business needs different things. Some businesses aren't, uh, aren't operating out of, uh, out of, uh, brick and mortar right now. And so that's just not as critical to some businesses. Okay, the upper right, this is, this is really what we want to talk about. These are things that are really important to businesses. And that they're saying that Ogden is really good at. Quality of life. Access to the, to needed labor and city services. So all three of these things are things that we'd want to talk about a lot because it's going to resonate with with the businesses. Especially as businesses are looking to move into the community. This gives us some really great justifiable evidence that, that if they want to, if that if a business wants to move to Ogden City. We can, we can definitely talk to the fact that our local businesses feel that they have great access to labor, that that it's a great quality of life location that the city services are easy to work with. And then again, the bottom right, these would be areas where, uh, businesses are very happy with. Um, and in many cases, they're just not quite as important as some of the other features. Supply chain proximity, that's just not going to matter to every business. Business financing, not all businesses need that. Um, so you just sort of see, uh, more niche items down in the, in the bottom right. We're going to look at a, another set. So these are more, say, business focused metrics. This slide is more, more for employees. More the type of things that employees might be looking for. Commute times, arts and entertainment environment, public transportation services. Uh, and things like that. Now arguably, we could include air quality, uh, here on the business side for all the, the manufacturing needs and and perhaps we should do that in the future. So, uh, the, so as far as how the businesses are suggesting that their employees or that they as an employee feel about the city. Again, great quality of life, great commute times, great proximity to outdoor recreation. These are both important, and they feel like Ogden is doing a really great job with these things. The affordability, cost of living and air quality are two areas where we could look at to see if there's anything that could be done here. Um, again, on the affordability side, costs are going up everywhere. Perhaps, uh, this is an education, uh, component of, uh, uh, to be, to be talked about there. Air quality, maybe we're doing a lot for air quality, and we could be talking more about that since this seems to be important to a lot of people. And so as we, and as we analyze these two charts, they just sort of give us that opportunity. See how the businesses feel like we're doing and and then be able to hopefully see some, uh, some positive movement over time. We next move to a question. So this is a, this is sometimes called the net promoter score. It's just a question that asks how likely are you to recommend operating a business in Ogden City to someone else? And, and so you see the distribution here. The distribution looks really good. We have an average score of six point seven. This is on a zero to ten scale. The net promoter score, this is a calculation where we just take the promoters, what we might call promoters, the nines and the tens, twenty percent. And we subtract the forty percent of detractors, which are the zero to sixes. And that gets us that negative twenty number. Now technically, when it comes to consumer research, anything above zero is considered good because you have more promoters than you have detractors. There hasn't been a lot of research done on using the net promoter score in in municipalities or states or governments. And so it's difficult to say how this really compares. Uh, again, a lot of times businesses are going to focus on, say, their barriers, taxes, things like that. And that might draw the score down a little bit, so I wouldn't be too worried about that. But definitely something that we can track over time and and just want to see improvement, uh, rather than, uh, the other direction. We also ask more directly, how is your opinion of doing business in Salt, in, in Ogden City changed in the past twenty-four months? I apologize, I almost said Salt Lake City because we just did one for Salt Lake City as well. You'll notice that the majority of businesses say, well, my opinion hasn't changed, and that's probably good. We probably wouldn't expect their opinion of the city to change, uh, drastically. So that's not, that's not bad. And then we have about equal amounts of people indicating that their opinion of the city has either gotten worse. And, uh, and twenty-three percent indicating that's it, that it has improved. So again, you've got some people feeling the burdens of, say, either taxes or the increased, uh, real estate, uh, cost of living. Uh, those sorts of things. And then others who either aren't as impacted by that, or maybe just have a more positive outlook on it. Recognize the grass is always greener and and certainly value what they're seeing within the city. Okay, for those who indicated that, uh, that finding labor can be a struggle sometimes. So we asked, we asked if if finding labor is ever a challenge. And, uh, or or what their labor challenges are. And the number one issue with labor is finding it. And number two is affording it. People don't have as much of a problem keeping it or reducing turnover, though it's certainly, it's certainly up there in the top three here. Uh, finding a diverse workforce was not cited as being as serious of an issue. And then the other category here, they were allowed to type, um, what their challenge is. And the majority, nearly all of these, were simply highlighting a combination of these. Though this is a select all that apply question, which is why these add up to more than one hundred. So certainly finding and affording labor are are our two biggest challenges. When we dive into that a little bit deeper, say, well, who is it that you're struggling with the most? And number one is the skilled labor, trade, trade workers. We have this chart in in descending order of the red bars, and the red bars are difficult. So we're saying that seventy percent of the people who struggle to find labor. It's the skilled and trade worker labor category that they're struggling with. Next is is executive and tech talent. Then we get down to general service help and administrative office. Um, really, this skilled, uh, labor kind of pops quite a bit here at seventy percent saying that it's, uh, difficult. Okay, so expansion plans. We asked the businesses whether or not they plan to expand their business in the next twelve to twenty-four months. And you'll notice oftentimes we'll look at what we call the top two box. That's adding up these top two boxes or the top two columns here. Uh, when we add those up, we're at, what is that, about forty-seven percent? Of companies say that they either definitely will or or they, or they probably will expand within the next twelve to twenty-four months. So then we want to know, where will they expand? We've got forty percent of them indicating that they'll stay in the city if they expand. Twenty-two percent saying that they'll expand somewhere else and thirty-eight percent not being sure. So we really want to know why. For those who say that they're not going to expand in Ogden. Number one reason is real estate is difficult to find. Affordable real estate is difficult to find. Now, option number two is probably find additional customer bases elsewhere. If if you have a, a shop or a restaurant. Um, it makes sense. Maybe you're not going to open up another location right next door. So that's probably fine. They're looking for expanding their custom base, cu- customer base elsewhere. Uh, next is, well, we can't find the labor. Finding the labor is challenging. Uh, the rest of these get down into pretty low percentages. Uh, so really, it's that affordability is going to be our number one driver here, and then the other. A reason not being a cause for concern. But for those who said they will stay, they'll, it'll, they'll, uh, expand within the city. It's a great location, great access. You'll also notice, uh, uh, location and access is, uh, right here as a reason not to expand in Ogden. Again, differing business objectives. Some businesses, uh, have different needs for location. This is where our, our customers currently are, high quality of life. Those are sort of our top three things here, why we're going to stay. Okay, we're getting a little short on time, but we're just about through here, just a few final slides. Our export snapshot, we've got thirty percent X currently exporting. I, I'll, I'll take this moment to sort of highlight, by the way. Perhaps you have more census data on the percent of companies that are exporting, and maybe that doesn't match. I don't know. I actually didn't check. Uh, we, we did this, uh, as Sarah mentioned, we did this study last summer, so I don't recall. Uh, so just remembering that this is sample data. This is of the one hundred and twenty-four respondents who, who responded. Thirty percent of them are currently exporting. Uh, of those who aren't ten percent would like to. And and of the ten percent who would like to, seventeen percent would like help with it. They'd like to learn how. So we've got a real opportunity here. And by the way, when we do these, uh, we do end up with their email addresses and, um. And and ask them if they would like to be contacted or be willing to be contacted. So this certainly does provide an opportunity for us to reach out to them if needed. Little bit of company growth information. Most of the companies, uh, were experiencing more revenue or significantly more revenue over the past twelve months. And their expectations are very positive. Uh, most companies are expecting quite a lot of growth over the next twelve months. This is really cool. Uh, future outlook, outlook of Utah and Ogden is very high. It's, it's much higher locally than. Excuse me, than at the national level. Not that we want the national level to be a, a, a negative outlook, but, but certainly, uh, we, we're looking at this dark blue here. Very positive outlook, twenty percent. The next, uh, blue, uh, bar here is slightly positive. So we're looking at somewhere between sixty to seventy percent of businesses within, uh, Ogden. Feeling really great about the city and really great about the state. And we've got, we've got some neutrals in here, very few on the negative side, about fifteen, twenty percent, um, who are, who are not as positive about the local community. Okay, and then finally, our local government. Uh, generally speaking, businesses are interacting with licensing, of course. Licensing permitting, business support. And when we look at how they rate their experience, it's generally good. This is skewing positive. We've got. Excuse me, we've got, uh, about sixty percent, fifty, sixty percent of, of, uh, respondents saying it's either good or excellent. Thirty percent saying no complaints, it's average, and, uh, very few people relatively speaking on the bottom end of the scale here. We'll skip this for the sake of time. So just in summary, uh, quality of life and access to labor, very important to local businesses. And they're also feeling like Ogden is doing a really great job with that. Ogden can deliver on that. Taxes as an area, businesses would like to see improve. That's again, not usually shocking. Uh, we all want to pay less taxes. Affordability and air quality are areas of concern as well for local businesses. The net promoter score of negative twenty shows opportunity for improvement, but again, that's something we just want to track over time, and we just want to see it tick up over time as we go. Most businesses have not changed their opinion of doing business in Ogden recently. That's good. We want that to be stable. Sure, we want it to improve slightly over time, uh, but but more than anything, that's, that's a good thing to stay stable. About half of Ogden companies might expand in the next two years. And about half, uh, thinking that they'll expand in the city. And remembering that the biggest reason that they might leave is because local real estate is, uh, a finding, uh, affordable local real estate can be challenging in some cases. But those who are staying, they value the great location and the high quality of life. About a third of companies are exporting, and of those who aren't ten percent would like to, and seventeen percent would like to learn more about it. About sixty percent of businesses have a positive outlook on Ogden's future, and most businesses' experiences with local government. Are with licensing and permitting, permitting and are skewing towards very positive. That's it. I, I know that was a, a quick overview. I want to be respectful of everybody's time. Uh, but this is a, this is a survey that, as Sarah said, we like to do this annually so that rather than just giving a snapshot and then forgetting about it. We can actually track these changes over time and hopefully, uh, implement some things that could show some improvement. We're looking at doing, uh, launching the next survey, I believe, in, in January or February. We've been working with Sarah and David on that. And we're excited to see how things have changed over the last year. But, uh, with that, any questions or or comments?
Uh, could you tell us what has been your experience? Interacting with, uh, Hispanic businesses and immigrant, other immigrant community businesses?
You know, I think, I can't recall if it was the Salt Lake. It might have been in the Salt Lake study that we did. We had a question that, that, um, asked if they were, um. Uh, women owned or if they were a member of a diverse community, if they were veteran owned. We kind of went through a number of different things. That helped us to isolate the results by those different communities. Now, this is not a qualitative research, and so we're, we're not on the phone talking with different companies. But, uh, but it can be helpful to isolate our learnings by different, uh, different categories. And so I don't think we had that in this Ogden survey. We can certainly look at adding that for the next go around if we want to get a better feel for that.
Yeah, at our Hispanic community here is about thirty-three percent of the population, so I think that will be very, very important.
That's amazing, a- and and that's sort of the, um. The great thing we can do next time is, is undoubtedly a, a large number of the respondents in this last survey were Hispanic, but we, we don't know because we didn't ask, so we can certainly include that next time. Great question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I have a question about some of the data, um, about particularly the skilled labor that you recited. Um, I was curious as if you compared how those, the numbers that that Ogden generated. Compared to statewide or or other communities like us. I mean, are we, uh? Uh, doing worse or better than than surrounding areas, or I, I know this, this, uh, skilled labor is is kind of an issue these days. Um, and I just didn't, and and I think it's universal. I just didn't know how much it was hitting us harder or less hard than other areas.
You know, it's a tricky, it's a tricky outcome that might make it look like you have a bigger challenge than other areas because I would say that. The skilled labor component is smaller in the other. If I'm not mistaken, it's largest. The largest difficulty is in Ogden, and that's not as big in other communities. However, what might look like a bigger challenge may actually be just a function of, of the. Level of advanced composites and manufacturing and and skilled labor that's needed, uh, to fulfill the, the business needs. We all know that one of the legacy industries in Ogden is aerospace and defense and advanced composites and. And so it, it, it may appear that you're struggling with that more than other communities because that number is higher. Um, but again, not to belabor the point, I, I think it's also fair to say that Ogden, uh, really, um. That, that's a, that's an area of specialization for Ogden City, and so there's more need there. Uh, most of the other communities, it's tech. Tech tends to be the, the area where people are struggling with the most, um, as opposed to skilled labor.
So that skilled labor, that includes like plumbers and, you know.
Plumbers, welders, um, as well as advanced composites. In the actual survey, there's a bit of a description there. So, uh, yeah, lo- a- a- all the way from sort of more traditional manufacturing to advanced manufacturing.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. Great question.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate your presentation. I, just for clarity. It seemed like sometimes you were talking about our ability and our, um. How good we're communicating certain things versus how well we're doing in terms of executing and implementing on certain policies. Which, which were, which was it when you were looking at the level of satisfaction and level of importance? Or is it both?
It can be both, yeah. It's really dependent on the actual feature itself. And the reason I say that. When we first launched this study in Salt Lake City, um. Was something about labor. I can't recall exactly what the issue was, but labor was really. Was something about labor, I can't recall exactly what the issue was, but labor was really, really down low. On satisfaction. And Salt Lake City hit it really hard for a year, they they hired, you may know him, I'm I'm forgetting his last name, I think is Jacob Maxwell, I believe was his name. They hired him as a result of this survey, and he worked on labor, on labor issues and labor recruitment in the city. They talked about it a lot everywhere they went. And we saw that number improve significantly. And so my point in sort of isolating policy versus messaging is that sometimes. Sometimes people are unhappy with taxes because they feel like taxes are too high. Are taxes too high or? Or do they just feel like they're too high? In other words, Ogden might have the lowest taxes in the state. And so maybe we just need to realize that as a local business. So most of these metrics, we would just really want to identify what is the issue. If access to needed labor was over here, then the question is. Are you just unaware of the resources that are available to access labor? Or do we actually have a challenge with accessing labor? Is air quality actually better than you think it is? No, maybe we just need to do a better job conveying the fact that our air quality is better. If we feel like, nope, our quality is bad, then it becomes a policy issue. So we really want to dissect each of these to to basically determine, is this reality or is it perception? If it's reality, it's more policy, if it's perception, it's more messaging.
Might just do a follow up to that, so if you have that, you know, issue, then how do you sort of dig deeper? Do you contact people via the email they're shared, your focus groups, or how do you go about that?
Boy, what a great question, so many times we look at this data and we think, well, this tells us a little bit, but not enough. And and so there are two ways we could attack attack that. One is we can add a little bit of specificity in each community survey, even though this is the same survey across all communities. We can and do add some specificity, so when we see issues pop up in the survey. We can make additional deep dives for the next time we send out the survey to get more information. Alternatively, and 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 what I would recommend, though obviously it's creating more work. Is is exactly what you just suggested, that we we try to focus group some of these problems, just. And 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 probably not even focus group, probably in-depth interview. Call up some local businesses, I know you're visiting visiting with businesses anyway, and so let's say air quality is the issue. So now every time we go out and we visit with our businesses in, say, a note, know the customer program or whatever it may be. We just bring the the topic up, you know, hey, how do you feel about air quality? Oh, I hate the air quality, well, tell me more about that. And so these become more of those one-on-one conversations where we can understand a little bit more of a deep dive. But again, we can also add a little bit in the survey. Sadly, the surveys have, you know, a length, we we, if we go too too long, too many questions in a survey, people get bored and. We won't get enough information, so we can add a little bit more, but really, it's those one-on-one interactions with businesses that I think can help that a lot.
So I just have a follow-up question, so how many times have we done this survey in previous years?
What do you think, Sarah? Well, we did this, we did this, I think. Yeah, I think this was the second one, we did it once, I think about three years ago or so, maybe before the pandemic. And then we did this one again last summer, and now we'll be doing the third one in in the first of next year. Which will give us a great opportunity, by the way, you'll see a new graph at that point in the next survey. Which will show net promoter score over time, will show some changes in 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 a lot of these. There's just one or two, there's not enough there, but by the third one, you'll start seeing us showing you the differences.
I guess where I was going with that question, you you mentioned Jacob and. You know, what what are we doing to move that needle? What are we doing internally to move that needle, and maybe that's. Maybe you have that answer, but I just think it's really important for us. What's important to us, and then how do we move that needle?
So Matt, I'll kind of jump in there, just from the from the business development perspective, I think. This really helps guide our outreach and communications. And I'd love to see, Matt mentioned that on the export question, they have the option to opt in to have a, somebody contact them to follow up. We'd love to do that for this survey as well, so that if if folks are having challenges with their businesses or. They see an expansion opportunity, we'd love to give them the choice to opt in to have a member of our team follow up with them. And then I think just communicating as much as we possibly can about the resources that are available. And committing to doing this survey on an annual basis moving forward, so that we can understand how things are trending over time and and respond to that.
Yeah, and I I, you don't have to take it all on yourself, I mean, like the World Trade Center is doing a lot of exporting stuff right now, and so I just. Just partnering.
And then I just wanted to add one other thing on that too, so. I think it's really exciting to see in this survey how much of the interaction happens with permitting and licensing, as you might expect. Like, they're really, really the ones that are interacting with the majority of our businesses in Ogden, and so. Chris and the Building Services team do an amazing job with that, and I think we'd like to see how we can work together to make sure that we're. Also providing information about the business development resources that we might have available at that point of contact when folks come in to get a business license or permit. Because that's, you know, folks are already interacting there, they're happy with the service they're receiving, and how can we add more resources to that interaction?
She's had a question on the methodology, I think you mentioned one hundred and twenty-four responses and you'd like to see more. Just curious what steps you're taking to increase that, I, it looks like an email was sent and, you know. A lot of business owners get a lot of emails, and oftentimes those get buried, I I was curious if you had considered partnering with the chamber. And maybe even sharing some of the results of these surveys with the local chamber to to partner with them on that, I think it'd be valuable information. And potentially, they could help. Expand our reach with business owners.
We'd love that, to to nerd out with anyone who's interested. According to the law of large numbers and the central limit theorem, we really want a hundred and thirty responses to be statistically significant. However, that's assuming it's being collected through a random sample, and a survey is not a random sample, it's what's called a convenience sample. Now, the larger the sample size gets, the more you negate the bias of the small, of the of the fact that it's not a random sample. So that's why we say, oh, maybe one fifty, two hundred, that's where we'd feel like the results are representative of the population. I love your suggestion, we'd love to partner with any anyone, the chambers, World Trade Center, anyone who's got additional email addresses. Half the email addresses are just going to go into spam. And and the ones that don't go into spam, business owners are busy, they're going to delete them, so partnering is a great way to do it. We've also considered, Salt Lake City considered sending out a a sort of postcard. To businesses, there's a, there's a cost to that, but you know, they considered doing that to see if that was successful. In fact, Sandy City put it in their their business newsletter, so really flooding flooding everyone as much as we can with the message. When it's time to send out the survey is the best approach, and I'll I'll be sure to be working with Sarah on how we can go about getting that number up.
Yeah, there are questions or comments?
So Matt is so on top of it, that he's already sent us the draft survey questions for the next round, we think we could go as early as February.
Just a follow up to that, do the respondents get any information back about the survey after they fill it out?
That's a good question, I don't think that's built into the process right now, is it, Matt?
It's not, yeah, it's not built into the process right now.
But I think that's a great idea, I think if I filled out the survey, I'd love to see the results, and so that's something we could look at as a follow-up, the sharing, sharing those results back out.
I think it makes them more likely to participate again, if they know we're actually, what the data shows and maybe what we're doing about it.
I will point out too, so many times, businesses, people, whoever's replying to a survey. To your point, I'm sorry, I didn't see who said that, the the likelihood to. Participate in ongoing surveys is increased when they see changes made based on survey results. And so, for example, i- if if we were to come out and 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 blast all of our messaging with, wow. You guys all told us that you're concerned about air quality, and for twelve months, we drill air quality. Here's what we're doing, here's what you can do, here's what we can do, you know, all of a sudden people realize, wow, Ogden City is actually listening. That makes a huge difference, even 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 if there's not a lot we can do about some of these issues, just the fact that you're listening. Really makes a huge difference to most. Anytime you look at longitudinal studies like this, makes a huge difference with the difference for the participants.
Thank you so much, thank you. Glad to see the next one.
Thank you, guys, great being with all of you tonight.
Thank you.
Looks like up next we have Jeremy Smith, our manager of community economic development, to talk about affordable housing and homeownership. I appreciate all that data you gave us already in the packet, thank you, you know me, I love data.
Hello, everyone, as was mentioned, my name is Jeremy Smith, I'm the manager for community development here at Ogden City. Like to excuse Brandon Cooper, he's sick today, he wanted to be here to be a part of this conversation, but. What happens when he gets sick, we don't want him here, so anyway. As Angela, Council Chair Tuberka mentioned, the packet you received, that's part of the agenda, has a lot of. Results and accomplishments the city has done as far as affordable housing goes and homeownership. Since the inception of the programs, some of them thirty years old. We're not going to get into those details tonight, those are for your reference. And as awesome as they are, we love talking about them, but we thought we would do something a little more productive, I guess. Tonight with our time, and that's to talk more about the future of affordable housing here at the city. As all of you participated in the past few weeks, we've had several guest speakers come and present to us. Different solutions, input, projects, programs, all sorts of ideas floating through the city as far as. What other folks are doing to address the affordable housing issue. As we know, this is not just an Ogden City issue, right, it's not even county issue or state issue, this is a national and even global. Challenge that everyone's facing, so. As Governor Cox mentioned in one of his recent addresses, he's asking on all cities to do their part. And so we want to make sure we're a team player and doing our part to do what we can, make sure if the things we're doing are adequate. If they need more to be enhanced, or if there's new things that we can do that can assist with this. We want to entertain them and be receptive to them, so. As mentioned, rather than talk about our previous programs, as awesome as they are, we'd like to hear from you. And collect your feedback on how you thought those sessions went the past three weeks, the three? Three weeks and get your input on what you would like to see us begin to really sink our teeth into as far as analyzing as maybe. Viable options for the city. As far as programs go or ideas, and it may not even be something they've brought up and something you've just heard about out there, is maybe that's something. Might work for the city, we would love to get your feedback on for those items, so. Rather than me ramble on, I would love to hear your feedback on what you thought about those presentations and see if they would be. Appropriate for the for the city to entertain, and I can answer questions to my best ability, but. A lot of them will probably need to be deferred for more analysis, so with that, I'll turn the time over to. City Council here.
Well, one thing I would love, just clarification, I know we have some. Members that are coming into office here in present, or maybe people aren't aware, and just a little bit more clarification around. I know that there's some things that are possible that we can do in the RDA. As that board or under those sort of rules that maybe Ogden City can or can't do, and we have kind of different buckets of money. I don't know if that would be helpful, just to kind of talk about. So I guess my thinking is, and I maybe if I'm off track, then you can tell me, I'm thinking that we have more opportunity to be more innovative with the RDA. Projects because of different sources of funding. Whereas Ogden City projects seem like they're kind of already defined and have more. Rules around what we can do, is that inaccurate?
That's accurate, mostly because when you talk about Ogden City funding, those are usually done through our federal grants.
Right.
Those grants have strict guidelines of what you can and can't do with that money, and they're defined through our. Insolated plan, which we establish every five years and then update annually, but those goals are set in stone. And it takes a an amendment to adjust it, and it's a big bureaucratic process, so. The RDA has much more flexibility in that there's no federal strings attached, and so. The requirements aren't there, I mean, you don't necessarily have to use all that RDA money for affordable housing, but you can, right, so their options are. Are there and there is flexibility for for you to do that.
I appreciate the information as well, you know, going through. The last few weeks as well as your, the the information in the packet, it's obvious that there's. A lot of efforts being done in a lot of different avenues and ways to try and address this this challenge and. And it's also good to recognize, you know, those things that we can control and things we can't control, like market forces, there's there's certain, certainly aspects of. Of that. You know, if somebody buys a home as an owner occupied. Property and then later on decides they want to move out and rent it to somebody, there's not a lot a city can do. To control some of those things, and so. It was interesting to see where certain parts of the city, there's higher rental areas than others, and. Anyway, it's all, it's all good information, I think one of the things that jumped, one of the things that. Jumped out to me on one of the presentations, Park City seemed to have kind of a unique or an innovative idea of trying to create homeownership for. Public servants, you know, firefighters, police departments. And I'm just curious if that's something that the city's heard of or looked at or is looking into anymore in that area. You know, just to see if that's a viable solution, we had the the North Jackson area that we're looking to develop under the. The Quality Neighborhoods Initiative, and and just was curious if that might be an area where we could, we could try something like that out.
Yeah, and that's. It it is interesting, anytime you look at housing with deed restrictions. Which is what Park City has engaged in, where they have such a lack of abilities of people living in that city to actually show up to work, right? You have a lot of real high-income people living there, but no one to actually get things done, so. I worked up there for a summer. In college and I did landscaping and I did all these beautiful homes. No one lived in any of them. It was, it was fascinating to me, it was like working on a movie set or something, in that. I lived with my uncle Nan up there and, you know, was able to do that, but that's, that's what you're dealing with, you've got such disparity between the actual. People that own the property and the people that are actually living there and working there, they had to have, they needed that mechanism to support that. Ogden, whether that's appropriate for our city here, I mean, that will take further analysis, if that's something, if, do we need that? Housing product for the workforce here, or is there another need that would require that type of. Mechanism? That remains to be seen, I think, so we could definitely look into that and see if that's appropriate. One of the things that does do anytime you put. Rent controls and things on there, someone always ends up paying for that, so is that, is it more? Is it worth it to do it, or is it more a deterrent to the development itself? So those are the balancing things you have to weigh and see, okay, this is, this is worth it, it's in a location where. It's going to be productive and effective, and it's it's accomplishing the need we. We have, and there's, there's a lot of tools that come with that, I mean, there are land leases, there's all sorts of things. That can be used that might be appropriate or not for helping affordable housing, so. Those are, those are some of the things that definitely can be looked at.
Made the comment that you hit the nail on the head, more analysis, which would require a lot more data. Seems like we've got a good opportunity to do some really deep analyses. And if we have the data, I'm not sure where it's lacking or not, but. One place I wondered where it is lacking is, do we have a, an inventory of our current stock of. Housing type? And I know rental versus ownership is even harder, but other than the entitled. Projects, do we know what our current stock?
We do, I, I don't know how current it is. So we would have to check, I know planning does a really good job with those numbers, and we can work with them. See how current that is, and if it needs to be updated, we can, but we do have a general idea of what type of housing stock we have, I mean. It's no secret that the homes in Ogden are old, right, some of them over a hundred years old. The nice thing that we have about that is that they're smaller. Homes that are way more affordable than most of the state. That's a, looked at as an advantage in a lot of ways, the problem with that is that they are old and they do take maintenance, so. If we want to continue to preserve that stock, it's going to continue to encourage. We need to encourage the reinvestment and investing in maintaining these homes, so they're not just being demolished by neglect. Which we see all over, right, you have homes that people have decided to stop maintaining, they become uninhabitable and have to be demolished. And the sad part about that is, as we do, you know, we build new homes in the city, and sometimes we have to tear down ones to do that. It's always more expensive to have to build a new. It's always more expensive to have to build a new home rather than renovate one. And it's way better to catch that before it gets so bad you have to do that. The new home is going to be more expensive. Even the cheapest homes you can build are going to be more expensive than renovating an existing home. So that's my my plug for making sure we are focusing on our existing stock because we have tons of affordable units that are already there. But just keeping them healthy is going to be a key to this whole thing.
I think Glenn sent out an article called the, was it referring to natural occurring affordable housing? And it's this type of housing that he's talking about where these older homes that are are just there, smaller, that are existing. So if you haven't a chance to read it, you should read it.
I'm just curious to follow up on the data, and I know there's people that can dig into this farther, but I know that we're always talking about rentals versus homeownership. And I know that people have to get a license to run out their home, but I guess I'm just wondering how often people do that, kind of like the ADU ordinance, et cetera. I mean, what's the repercussion if a person is running out their home and they don't get a license to do that?
Yeah, it's it's tough to to follow up and see on that because, I mean, that would be a whole division tracking down, seeing to do, did you get your license, you know, and people are running out and deciding not to. It's it's, I don't know the actual percentage of actual licenses to actual ADUs per se. So that's, that's a challenge.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious and I, you know, I certainly support people being able to live however they're able to. So I don't have a problem with renters, but I just feel like there is a challenge that we have that it doesn't often get talked about where people have investment properties, which they certainly have a right to do that.
Yeah.
But that is also causing, in my eyes, especially in East Central, some issues around supply. Because people are, I've seen many homes that don't get taken care of very well that are being rented out to people that are just deteriorating, but people have purchased them for such a low price so long ago. They're just waiting it out until later when they'll get quite a large, you know, probably return on that investment. And in the meanwhile, they're renting to people and charging them a certain amount of money, but it's not really quality. You know, they're not quality places for people to live.
So yeah, and.
That's a a challenge that I see that I just don't know. It's one of those kind of wicked problems that I work on even in my day job too. It's like, it's so complicated and convoluted that you don't know exactly how to try to address it, to make it so that people have better places to live. Because they're probably, as Steve Waldorf kind of pointed out, a lot of people are probably paying more than they would if they had a mortgage, you know, especially for that home that they're living in.
Yeah, and that's, it's not a new problem. I mean, that's been around since anyone started thinking about this. As the disinvestment, especially in the East Central neighborhoods, has happened and people started doing ADUs and it was before even, they didn't call them that, right? They were just finishing their basement.
My, yeah, my house has three.
Put in a new door and a bunch of mailboxes. And I think, you know, we've we've tried really hard, especially over the past thirty years to really try and remedy that and show how it's done correctly. Not that we're trying to minimize the units, but show how it's done in the right way. So things like our, yeah, things like our new development, Sickmore Cove, will have seven new homes in it. They'll all be ADU ready homes. So the buyers can go in there, they can finish the basement. What that does is it still sticks with the traditional historical neighborhood from the look, but you've actually doubled the units that are in there potentially. So that's, we're trying to model that to the community to show that this is, there is a right way to do this and make it so it's safe and provide the units that that are needed.
I have another question, sorry. Just the, we're seeing a lot of development of apartments around the city. And there's there's quite a bit in construction. I think in your your packet, it said three thousand nine hundred and nine town homes and apartment units that are that are coming online, I guess. Is there any way to 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 interpret how that might have an impact on affordability of living in Ogden? If we have a greater supply, I mean, that seems like a lot of units to me. And if you look around the area, it seems like there's a lot of units coming in. Are we getting occupancy rates that suggest that they're all going to be filled? Or, you know, the other concern is that do we have, are we going to have a bunch of apartments that are empty? You know, I don't, I don't know.
No, it's all anecdotal at this point. I mean, we, every developer that builds an apartment goes into it with a certain pro forma that shows what their occupants will be. And they're continuing to build based on those numbers. Whether that happens or not, you know, is is the question. So far, they've been really well on their ability to occupy everything that's being built. But there will be a whole new tranche, as you've seen, come online here in the next year that will be detested, really. And that's not unique to Ogden. I mean, anyone that's driven around Davis County, Weber County, they are everywhere. And they're all coming online about the same time. So all of us are just kind of wanting to see how this is going to go. But at some point, all the indicators say demand is still there and strong, and so that's why they keep building.
I have a comment, you know, about about that. I I, in my discussions, not on the record, but, you know, off the record at the at the county and the Housing Committee that's there, you know, some of these, it's it's not a uncommon statement of some of these mayors that are out in smaller communities.
You're trying to be very diplomatic.
I'm trying to be, you know, I mean, they are our partners in in this whole deal. I mean, we're, it's not an Ogden City problem, it's a bigger problem than Ogden City. But but the but the statement is, yeah, we'll 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 move our kids into Ogden when they're four. And then when they get a little wealth, then we'll move them back, you know? And so, and Ogden's has complied with that, with all these apartments and all the rentals and all the things of that nature. I think the demand is going to continue to go because people got to live somewhere. They'll they'll rent if they can't buy. I I think what I have, the the, in in my perfect world, which there isn't one, but it seems like what we ought to be doing as as Ogden City is to is to really take a good look at our at our city, our housing stock, take take an inventory, look at our electors and and arterial streets and say, okay, where's where is the density most appropriate? Transit lines, next to schools, next to, you know, things of that nature. So so that we, and and then say, okay, does our zoning comply with this? And then in in our neighborhoods where they are very established and and there is a flavor and that we don't want to disrupt a neighborhood, I think we've got to be really a lot more careful about that than we have been. I was very, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, whatever it was, the first session we had, it was a downer, boy. I tell you, they it was, it was depressing. And then and then we got those next two that, hey, we got some people thinking outside the box and then Governor Cox spoke. Gave me some hope that that maybe there's some some new things on the horizon that we need to be key to and and nimble and ready to react for. Because I think it's going to be different, you know?
For sure. Well, I don't know, you got the email from Governor Cox today, sending out to everybody, right? Like, so if we don't, or if people don't do it locally, it will.
We've known that for a long time. I mean, we, you know, we've been guarding for that. And and that's kind of the whole point with the with the Weber County housing discussion. Is how do we get this thing to happen everywhere appropriately? So that quality of life stays high and and community identity is is enhanced and and things of that nature. But change is going to happen everywhere, you know, I mean, these, the the day of, we're going to have one acre lots for for a community. They've really got to be back on, you know? Yeah, and and some people are really hanging on to that around the around the county. And and we can, we can, we can't beat them up, but we can help them. And I think we've need to need to help with vision. And, you know, they've they've got problems with, they don't have a big planning department in these little communities. And they don't have, they don't have a full-time engineer, they don't have some of these things that that are, and so they're very resistant to that. Now, I'm not saying that we need to provide that for them, but we can certainly help them. We can seed some of it for them. And that's kind of what I think Ogden's role probably has, the county seat, has the big city in the county. I think that's what we can do to help our our neighborhood cities, our neighboring cities, our partners in this in this housing issue to grow responsibly so that they can be happy and proud that they still, that they didn't feel like they just had to cave. And I think that's where they're feeling today.
Yeah, and you, just to clarify, that is kind of a subcommittee of Wake HOG, right?
It is, it is, it is a subcommittee, and and it's changed in the last several months.
I mean, I don't know would it be worth having somebody present about what they're working on here or?
Not at this point. Disarray right now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's.
The same, like.
It's in real disarray. I think that there's, you know, it's trying to reform a little bit since we, you know, lost the director over there. And it even looks a lot different than it does. And so I, there's no presentation now. It's probably better that we present to them than them to us. You know, some of the stuff we've had would be really enlightening to them.
Well, that's a good point. I think especially is, you know, we look at Ogden City and how much land we really have left, right? To develop, it's really sparse. It's really hard for us to find enough land to really put a dent in anything. And that's not true for other cities in the county, right? They have a lot more capacity to do more, but, I mean, we've been in an affordable housing business a long time. They have not. And so our role is an example, to show them how it's done correctly, absolutely appropriate. I mean, we can do that and we have. So whether getting that communication out them in an effective way to them, that's the challenge, I guess.
So I'm just going to make a a comment. I don't, I think one of the things, it it's not, it's a bit of a Tetris game. And I and I look at it from, you know, we, you said it, you said something earlier that really clicked with me. And that is, is that we need to try to keep those houses or those houses that we have that are affordable housing units right now, healthy. Somewhere over there.
Did you like it? I don't know. I said it, yeah.
And we have to be, I I guess, you know, and I say that it's a bit of a Tetris game because I think because we have so many what we consider affordable housing units on the market already or in the market, maybe not on the market, in the market. That I think, I think it was Tom Christopoulos that once said, for every seventy-five cent house that we build or or have, we need to build or have a dollar and a quarter house. And I'm just using those as an example, in order to maintain the current services that we that we have, whether that's police, fire, parks, you know, scooping our driveways or our roads. And so I think it's, for us, it's a little bit different than maybe some of the surrounding communities. And that are there, we're doing a good job of, you know, our home loan programs and those kind of things. But is that something that we should maybe be really focusing more money at? And trying to keep those housing units in stock healthy so that we can continue to have the other side and not have to continue to maybe look so much at the subsidized housing that.
That's a great question. In fact, our health programs, I mean, you're familiar with, we do home exterior loan programs. Typically, we loan up enough money and we get close to our goal. This past year, we ran out of money in October. And so that program has been suspended until July, until we get those funds replenished. So there is, yes, yeah, record breaking. So if you look at our graph, usually we have this gold line that goes along here and we usually get pretty close to it. It just goes whoop, straight up. Within two months, we had basically loaned out everything. And now those loans go exactly what we're talking about, roofs, sewer lines, just keeping those homes healthy, right? That's, there is a need and it is strong. And, yeah, right now, we're unable to do that for our homeowners, so.
Is that only a program through HUD or is that a program that Ogden City?
Through citywide, and yeah, there, it has a lot to do with interest rates, I'll tell you that. We don't have the same high interest rates if you go get a home likely loan. Right now, it's no fun. But if the city's doing one at a lower rate, that's a lot more attractive. It used to be the same, right? It was, everything was so low. It's like, well, my credit's crappy, so I'll go to the city because they're nicer.
Kind of makes me wonder if that's not something we ought to budget a little heavier.
Those are things to consider.
It's got to come from somewhere, I know.
And we get it paid back. I mean, that's what's really great about it is although we charge.
I have used that and it was a, it was a great program.
We're being impact investors when we do that.
And that is, and we have a model.
Budget that we lend out that we get back, but it's only the smaller rate.
Yeah.
We have a model, we have a really good consultant that has developed this model that shows exactly where it needs to be. So it's just generated and taken care of itself, so.
No, I appreciate I used it when we first bought our home.
It's a great program. Yeah, it's been great.
I love that idea.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that we can't just continue to focus on affordable housing. I mean, we have to have all types of stock in order to continue to enjoy the services that we have.
I think that's.
That's, that's the Tetris game that I don't think people understand when we're up here trying to make the budget decisions, what we're looking at.
And I would really love to know further data about the occupancy for the apartments because we keep hearing that they're totally occupied, but then other people like, why do they? Maybe it's because they always have their phone numbers up or something that people don't think that they're occupied, but I don't know. Like, just from looking at, I wouldn't know, but we heard from both Phil and Chris, right, that they're.
I mean, the telling telling sign that we'll know is you look at the lease rates and see. If rent rent stays crazy high, they're full, right? But if you start seeing those drop down, it's because they need to start cash flowing.
You know, I was wondering, we were talking about the, you know, the ADUs and and things of that that nature. I I gotta believe we can do a better job of enforcing that to to kind of force people into the licensing structure. I remember, it's been several years ago, I got a, I got a notice that I was in violation at my house that, and we called the city and says, what what are we, what do we violate? They said, well, we think you have two families living there, says, but we don't. Well, you have two garbage cans. That's it?
That would be everybody in the whole neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's, that was what what did it. But but I think that there's, I think there's other way. That's that's kind of what I was getting at. Seems like at at the, you know, if at the utility, you know, the water utility, if people come in there, you know, people are signing up for for utilities. There ought to be a way to check to see if they actually own the home or whether they're renting.
Well, that's, part of signing up for water utilities, you have to bring in your closing docs that you own that. Yeah, so usually someone that's running out of their basement doesn't have a separate water meter for that basement. They just say, you owe me twenty bucks for the water you use.
Right.
This month or probably way more than that, but I don't know. I'd probably defer that to our business license department.
Yeah, I'm sure this is, this is a, probably isn't the right place for it.
I'd be guessing.
But I think we can do better. I think we can.
But at the same time, honestly, I mean, I guess I have mixed feelings about that. I want people to be able to do it, much like the argument for the southeast side, right? It was like a lot of people, that's the way that more retirees or some people that are on fixed incomes are able to keep their homes. So I understand what you're saying. Licensing is important because of safety issues and maybe other kinds of issues. But it's almost like you also want to encourage it to a certain extent. It's like you want to know who's doing it, make sure it's a safe space, but then also encourage it where it's appropriate.
It seems like an ADU, though, it ought to be licensed, much like somebody in the Good Landlord Program, at a much cheaper rate. So that wouldn't discourage people from doing it, I wouldn't think. But the fine ought to be a pretty encouraged, pretty good encouragement to do it if they got thought. And I think people are saying, eh, if I have any big deal, I'll just pay it if it happens.
And it's challenging to know whether the people are related. I mean, like, all that stuff that we've heard before.
That's the thing, too.
So I was going to make a comment, getting back to something, to Marcia's point. Your, your comments were getting back to the, we need housing across the housing type and across the spectrum of affordability. That's a great concept, but how do we quantify? And we can't quantify it unless we have a really deep dive in data analysis. And so that's why I was asking that question on the early end is, where are we short? And where are we maybe bloated within that spectrum, right? And I think, I can't imagine anything more important, analysis wise, heading into the general plan process than that. Because we're going to need to find out where we're short, where we're bloated, try and find balance within those things and then locate them along our arterials, along our transportation corridors and so on.
It's more like a real time versus like, oh, this is from the census track or the census database, whatever.
It's a really granular analysis that.
I think that, I don't think there's, I don't think there's up to date data enough to to. I don't think there's up to date data enough to, to be able to do that. I know when Dr. Maggie, Maggie did her study. You know, she really focused on that bottom tier, but if you looked at the top tier, uh. You know, meet people coming in that really want the super high end, we were short, I think seven hundred units in that too.
And where would they go, you know, higher up on the.
But that was from, you know, that's from five-year data that I, I don't, I don't know that maybe there is.
And to your point, the data may not exist, like it's not gonna just fall into our laps.
Light caster.
So we need to get.
There's, there's some resources that can be, just even looking at permit counts and things coming in, you can get a gauge, pretty good idea of what's coming right now, you know.
That's kind of what I was gonna say. You know, you can see from the last three or four years of, of permitting. What is, what is coming online versus what's not.
Right, and that's the entitlement, the entitled projects I mentioned, which the legislative audit mentioned, that there's problem, that's problematic data too. But it doesn't provide the info on the existing stock, which I think gets more to your point and yours, right? About that older stock, you know, making sure we're preserving it and so on. We need to know what we have and a sense of what's coming online. So that we can make sure that we're providing what we need.
Show up over here, you know?
He's over there, yeah.
And, and.
Nothing to do with.
And I know that, uh, you know, I mean, Greg used to come out and with this census data that I, you know, I mean, our census is only three years old now. We ought to be able to use some of that good census data, it, it auto-inform a lot of what we're doing.
A little bit. I mean, the pandemic, it's a little bit messy because of some other issues, but yeah.
What we have.
But we can find that stock, the, the older stuff, that analysis has been done. I mean, those homes aren't new, we're trying to figure out how many, it's been done. So we'll have to.
There's not off the top of your head, like, yeah.
Barton's gonna.
Does CoStar have any of that kind of data?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna say, we're doing our general plan. This is exactly the kind of data we're gonna be collecting and reporting to all of you.
Any other thoughts? We should probably move on to the next item, but I do appreciate your time um, so much, Jeremy, because this, yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanna make a comment too, and I, I think I've made this comment before, and that is, and you, you touched upon it earlier. Um, Rich, about, you know, making sure that when we do the general plan, when we do update, even North Jackson, you know, looking at access to opportunity. What's around there? What, do we need to add childcare services or places that, you know, that, yes, yes? Um, or, you know, medical facilities or, you know, you know, where we have pockets where we can lift the whole neighborhood up and not just a few, you know. That, a few houses in there. So um, you know, just really thinking through the access to opportunities and where people can get on bus routes and.
That's true.
That would be my.
Love that.
Perfect, too.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
We will continue the conversation.
Oh, and a place for old people to live like me.
Well, just old, we won't say like, okay, um.
Well, it's a problem.
Barton's coming right up to talk with us about subdivision ordinance amendments, which sounds very exciting.
It is, thank you. So, good evening. So this, uh. This is a proposal to make some amendments to our subdivision ordinance, uh, has really four purposes here. We want to align our subdivision ordinances with state law. There's been several changes in state law, so we wanna meet those. Uh, we want to clarify our language and make it easier to follow. So resolve some discrepancies within the code and also streamline and simplify the process. So there's, this affects several types of applications. Uh, one is kind of the simplest thing is what we call a lot or parcel combination. When you have two lots and you just wanna combine them into one. Um, looking at state law, it requires you to do a plat. Which is a lot of work for a lot of people, um, unless your code says that you can do it without a plat. And our, so we're gonna amend our code, propose to amend it so that you can do it without a plat, to simplify the process. Uh, we're also gonna propose that um, we have some clear language of when lots are considered combined. Um, Ogden's an old community, it's been divided up and lots of lands over uh, time has changed hands. And we end up with a lot of situations like this. In quite a few areas of town, the original subdividers divided them all into twenty-five foot wide lots. And the idea was that you could buy two if you wanted to, you know, have a five thousand square foot lot or three if you wanted to have seventy-five hundred. If you want really big, you could buy four and build your house on them. So that's what people did. So like in this. Corner here, they bought four of these lots and put a one house in between it. Um, up here, they bought two and a, oh, yes, thank you. Up here, they bought two and a half and another half of one and put a house in the middle of it. And that's just the way that the city has grown over time. So the, there is some questions about. Could somebody actually then sell off this middle twenty-five foot lot? And build a house on it or take this fourteen and a half foot wide strip and consider that a separate lot? Um, so the proposal would say, at least for subdivision purposes, if you build a house over, it's one lot. And that'll simplify a lot of discussions and it'll simplify things for people who like, wanna come in and put a shed. And we say, no. Maybe that's really a, a separate lot. So just clarifying when a lot is considered combined. Also do some amendments to the process for partial boundary and lot line adjustments. This is where. Uh, a property owner might own two lots and want to adjust the boundary or might have a neighbor and they wanna, you know, sell ten feet of their property to the neighbor for some reason. Uh, these are really pretty simple and we're trying to simplify the process. Uh, one thing that state law requires is that when you do it, that you have to have a public meeting. And um, this wasn't reflected in our code, and so it's kind of been lost over time. Uh, so we're proposing to do this as just a staff level public meeting. That's what we do now. We just pick a time like four thirty in an afternoon and. We have a conference room in this building and whoever wants to show up, which is usually no one, because no one really cares about these. Um, and we'll, we'll notice them and have the public meeting that's required by state law.
Barton, can I, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
I know in decades past, there was issues oftentimes between the county and the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, somebody could say, go to the neighbor and, and, and buy ten feet. And then just run it over and get it recorded and it was, and that let this, lead the city clear out a whole deal.
Yes.
Is that still able to be done or?
That is still able to be done. So um, I kinda say it's like uh, buying half a car. You know, can you cut a car in half and sell you, somebody a half car? Yeah, you can. Um, but then you can't drive that half car down the road. And so that's. So legally, can they do that? They can, but they've just chopped up their property to where they can't use it anymore. So they've gotta come back to the city and get it approved. So it does get complicated. And there's, there are lots of things that get recorded that don't need zoning.
Kind of getting at.
Yeah.
It seems like there. Some smart people ought to be able to figure out how to coordinate.
Yeah.
Between the county and the city.
Yeah.
But it never has happened for whatever reason.
Yeah, oh, oh, one of the big reasons is the state law. Um, state law is very sympathetic to property owners. Um, doing stuff like that. You have cases where you're out in a rural area and two neighbors find out that their fence line. Isn't where the property line is. And they say, eh, it's fine with us. We'll just go record something and make the property line the fence line. And then they come in and say, wait, you've just, you know, reduced your lot below zoning and it's a problem, but. So that's why I'd say state's law is very sympathetic to those property owners who were just doing something because they thought it was the right thing and, and not punishing them. Even though they end up getting punished, because it does say that we can, say you can't do any permits on those properties once you do that. Um, another thing is just how to deal with um, dedication plats and, and what we've sometimes called one lot subdivisions. Um, this is a case where as part of development, the landowners required to dedicate some land for a road and they needed to do a plat. And so we have traditionally called that a one lot subdivision. Though it's not technically a subdivision because they aren't subdividing into two lots. So we're just creating a process that allows you to create a plat. I, well, we're calling it a non-subdividing plat that would record a dedication or record an easement or things like that. Uh, trying to, some of the proposals would clarify the process for right-of-way vacations. Uh, often what we do is we look at the street and say, okay, that street isn't needed anymore. Uh, but also having look at how that relates. In this case where you've got, you dedicate that street, but then you got a lot that no longer has frontage. And so you really have to coordinate the land and parcel configuration with the vacation. And just clarifying the, this procedures to do that. And then the state came in with the. Senate Bill one seventy-four, which created a process for what we're calling limited residential subdivisions. And these changes apply primarily to residential subdivisions for single-family duplex and townhomes. So um. Lobbyists of the state uh, wanted to make the process for doing single-family subdivisions more streamlined. And a lot of communities where it isn't very streamlined. And I'll say this law is somewhat written in Egyptian hieroglyphics. It's kind of, you, you can tell they were trying to say something, but they didn't really say it. And so it's been difficult to figure out what they actually mean. And this will probably be amended or litigated over time. Um, but one of the provisions says that. A municipal ordinance shall designate a single administrative land use authority for review preliminary applications to subdivide land. So. I don't know, in some communities, you'd have a, your preliminary subdivision approved by the planning commission and then reviewed by the city council. And then the final plat would be reviewed by the planning commission and the city council. So. You know, developers were having to go through four processes to get their approved. And the state said, no more. You get one administrative authority to approves it. So in Ogden, our process is, it's reviewed by staff and then it goes to the planning commission for approval. And then it goes to the mayor for approval. So that's two administrative bodies. So we have to make a decision on which to go with, whether it's the planning commission or the mayor. Uh, we can't have both. So the uh, planning commission actually had a lot of discussion about this. And so their recommendation is that it, of those two, it'd just be the planning commission. Some of their reasons for that. Uh, one, they feel like they're very good at uh, taking public input, where you've got a group of neighbors that are concerned about something. They have a process that, it's an evening meeting, which is a little more convenient than a day meeting for a lot. They, they have a process to take public input, listen to them. Um, because there are a panel of citizens, you know, citizens come in and see a panel of citizens that some um, comfort. To citizens that are listening to them. Uh, they feel like uh, they, they're, present a good diversity of opinions. There's re, there's nine of them there and they can look at. Different uh, an application with different perspectives. Uh, since sort of the planning commission, they understand the plans and city plans and how proposal. Fits into the plans. And I think most importantly, uh, they understand how to apply the law. We think there's a lot of discretion in subdivisions, but there really isn't. And, you know, neighbors will show up saying, hey, we wanna stop this development behind this, you know, planning commission, stop it. And really. It meets zoning, it meets your lot widths, lot sizes, the streets are just code. There really isn't any answer that you can give other than yes, so.
You know, Barton, if, if I might just chime in here, having spent a lot of years on the planning commission, planning commissioners quite frankly do. Do think a little differently. They don't think politically, uh, which could certainly sway a, a vote to be arbitrary. Or appear to be arbitrary. Um, they do have to use findings of fact, which we aren't bound by. Uh, I'm, I'm kind of with them that this, that there's, there's a whole lot of reasons why planning commission not to be doing this and not anybody else. Just to give you a little.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So that was the commission's recommendation on that. Um, there are some other things, and the planning commission doesn't review all subdivisions. There are what's called a small subdivision. That uh, the mayor approves. And most of the time, that's like a two, dividing one lot into two or three lots. That's usually all it gets. You can go up to ten, but it can't have a street and you can hardly get ten lots without dedicating a street, so. Um. So a little technicality is if you, so if you do a small subdivision, that's like two lots, that gets approved by the, the mayor. But if you do a subdivision amendment where you already have a subdivision and you're just dividing one of the lots, that's a subdivision amendment. And in the current code, that has to be approved by the planning commission. So um, this proposal would just make it uniform to say one. That those would all be approved by the mayor. If it's, it would just be if it's, it's basically two or three lots that they're adding. Um, there are in Senate Bill one seventy-four, some review processes that, use, review cycles that you have to have the um. You have to review the plans within a certain timeframe. And that's, one of the questions that uh, was asked was. Uh, why those timeframes weren't included in the code and can we meet them? And the answer is, it's our normal process. We should be able to meet those timeframes that are in the code. Um, we didn't include a lot of those timelines because like I said, it's, it's kind of written in Egyptian hieroglyphics. It's not really clear, you know, they'll say like within twenty days, but it's not clear twenty days of what or to when, or when does that stop or go? So that's why we were light on adding dates in the code. But uh, yeah, we don't see any issue. Meeting the timelines, it's, it's more an issue for a lot of small cities that, you know, just have a contract engineer.
It, it, isn't that they can't still do a preliminary approval and then a final? I mean, that, that kind of, as long as it's the same body, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, well, basically the preliminary approval would be done by one administrative authority. So the planning commission in this case would approve that. And then, once you get that preliminary approval, the final plat is just administrative process.
So if a developer wants to come in and get a concept approval, that's, that's, you know, that's something else, right? They can.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. Um, another change was just on appeals, how, who appeals thing, who hears the appeals? And in this case, the subdivision ordinance isn't real clear in some areas like a, a lot line adjustment. That's approved by staff, but the subdivision ordinance doesn't say who that would be appealed to. And I've never seen one be appealed, but if, if it was, the code doesn't really say. So we would say that's the board of zoning adjustments, who hears appeals? Um, these small subdivisions, which is, it can be up to ten lots, but it's usually just two or three. Um, that's approved by the mayor, but the code says that that goes district court. We'd put the board of zoning adjustment in. Um, I think especially this, this is a good buffer, just to ensure that the decision is made according to law. Uh, standard subdivisions. If there's an appeal that, that would go, under the proposal, would go to the board of zoning adjustment. So basically, all the appeals would go to the board of zoning adjustment. Which is not the current process. A lot of times, they just go to district court. Uh, Senate Bill one seventy-four also added this provision for engineering technical review panel and um. This is another one where they had an idea, but it wasn't really fully fleshed of what they meant. It's. It's for a disputarizing from subdivision improvement plans. Requires a city to assemble an, an appeal panel to review or approve or deny a final set of revised plans. And this applies to engineering improvement plans for subdivisions for single-family, two-family or townhomes, not in geological hazard areas. Where the applicant disputes the road with requirements and where after the fourth review, the city fails to respond within twenty business days and the applicant requests review by such panel. App and disputes the road with requirements and where after the fourth review, the city fails to respond within twenty business days and the applicant requests reviewed by such. In short, it's probably never going to happen. It's if you require a street over thirty-two feet wide and we don't require streets over thirty-two feet wide, so this is probably gonna never gonna happen. Uh, but if it did happen. The engineering review panel be one engineer appointed by the city, one by the applicant and one agreed to by the. The two of them. So the proposal would be the city engineer would be in charge of creating that process.
It happened once somewhere.
Yes.
Therefore, it's now in state law.
Yes.
In this picture on the side, they go, they're putting together a rocket or. And that's with the pony.
Yeah, that was, that was my uh, table to attend a little bit of humor, so yes.
I love it, I noticed.
Thank you. Let's see, whoops. So again, these are a lot of technical. Changes to meet state law, there's a couple of policy decisions in there, but the planning commission recommends the city council adopt the proposal.
Have any feelings about adopt like coming to approve any more planning items as a mayor?
I like fewer. Your first meetings are gonna be on January fifth, by the way, and we have at least two items already scheduled for you, so be ready.
Looking forward to that. Good, okay, any other comments or questions?
I, one of the things I didn't bring up is that the planning commission doesn't get to have ex parte communication. Which can really be a the a muddy issue. I I really like the. I think they they had very sound reasoning and recommending that it be them that does it. I'm all for it.
Yeah, so yeah, next part take on that re- is basically, you know, where. If there's a, you know, we're talking about filing on streets, you you'll wanna go. Talk to your neighbors about it, the plan commission really can't do that when they're looking at a subdivision, they can't. Talk to the neighbors about it, because they need to. Have a fair forum, speak to everybody.
And if the neighbor wants to talk to them, they say, sorry. You can email all of us or talk to us at the meeting.
Yes.
That's what they get to do.
Yep.
Thank you, thanks so much, Barton.
You're welcome.
I haven't heard any concerns about that, will that be on an agenda coming up?
Yes, it's scheduled for, I think, Jul- January ninth?
January ninth, yep.
I think you're up.
All right.
Sure, Richie, to talk about the newspaper noticing requirement.
Yeah, so no, I appreciate some time and especially appreciate. Glenn, who put a lot of work into this, um, when we were reviewing the newspaper noticing requirements earlier this year and and. The recommendation to ultimately not or to discontinue newspaper noticing because the noticing was being done through the state website. Uh, one of the, one of the uh, ar- arguments or discussion items was that it can be a service issue where our not state code, but our city code. Um, has some um, imposes some timeframes that might. Create a little bit of a delay in in getting some of the uh, the processes done, and so in the council packet. You'll see there's, I don't know, I think there was ten or fifteen uh, specific. Items where city requirement is to notice the newspaper seven days prior to the meeting. And so as we talked about this, um. We were trying to look at how could we relax some of those ideas to where if the noticing is done through the state requirement. Um, could we still notice in the paper, I I I personally feel like as long as we have a daily paper, we should, we should continue to do that and that's probably a separate discussion, but. Um, but anyway, if we could still, if we meet the time period requirement, the seven days or fourteen days or whatever it is. With the state notice, the state website. Can we also say within, you know, within twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours, allow that to go to the the paper? So it still would be in the paper prior to the meeting, but. Not necessarily seven days prior or fourteen days prior, and so. Um, Glenn's put together a chart, you can see some of the items are for city council items, some are for planning commission. And um, that's just really the the thought is, can we make it a little easier for our, for those. Uh, noticing requirements and still meet meet our requirements, I guess. Any other, any additional comments, Glenn, on on that?
No, I I think you covered all the, all the important things, um. Yeah, one of the things I'll just point out on the chart that I put together, this, this, the the focus of it really was just the newspaper noticing, so you see on the. On the far right column, there's a ton of other requirements, these are all, you know, state code, city code, other things, but this just shows. The items that require the newspaper noticing and who is requiring them and every one of these is is the city that's requiring, the state is not requiring any. Any newspaper noticing for these anymore. Um, we had a good meeting with uh, with Barton and with Tracy, uh, our city recorder about this in a leadership meeting a couple of weeks ago and. And one of the things that they brought up was that because there's this lead time, right, it might say. You know, a seven day or a ten day or fourteen day notice in the paper. They have to get that done several days ahead of that. You know, they might, it might really be a seventeen day notice or a thirteen day notice, you know, depending on weekends and and holidays and things like that. And sometimes that can can push an item out farther than it should, because now. They really have two and a half weeks that they need to notice this and that doesn't fall on, you know, an agenda calendar. Um, and so shortening that, uh, relaxing that a little bit would help them with that scheduling. Um, the other thing I I will mention, um, from that meeting, uh, this, this really started with uh, the land use. Um, items that needed this newspaper noticing, uh, we had talked about expanding that, expanding the request to see if there are other. Other noticing requirements in the city that goes through the newspaper that could be relaxed a little bit too to to meet these that aren't necessarily land use items. Um, so that that probably will be part of the request too, um, if that's okay with you all. Uh, just to see, have administration look and see if if there are other newspaper noticing requirements that could be relaxed a little bit along these same lines.
Questions or concerns about all that?
So, so I'm hearing you say that if we shortened that noticing time, it would help us. From. Seven forty, I'm just looking at the different day time periods.
Yeah, so rather than having an item come to the, to the local historic register and and saying, oh, we we could get this on the meeting except for. The newspaper requirement is gonna require us to push that to a later meeting, but if, but. You know, it seems like uh, noticing through the state website was a little more nimble, a little bit more efficient. And um, could be done much quicker and then as long as. Again, my my thought was if we, if we said within twenty-four hours or within forty-eight hours of of that noticing, that it goes to the paper and then it'll. It'll publish certainly prior to the meeting, but may not be exactly, you know, seven days prior or whatever that.
I think, see what I heard in the meeting. From um, Tracy was that. When they put it on the state website, they'll also just get it ready and send it to the paper, so it probably will be. They're much sooner than what we're saying is the the minimum amount, but that that's just the idea that. Then it wouldn't get delayed getting put on agenda because of that.
Yeah, and I I think, you know, if an item comes at the end of the day and it's four thirty and they can get it posted one spot and they maybe need another day to get it to the other. I think, I feel like that's still consistent with this, this spirit of what we're trying to do and notify people, so.
And we also discussed, I mean, we hope that the standard will be able to keep doing print edition, you know. For a while, but like the Salt Lake Tribune, for example, they now only do a paper. Um, delivery and it comes through the mail on Wednesday and then for the weekend for Sunday. So that if that were to ever happen, then we might wanna relook at it or. Adjust it again based on whether we want it to be in that paper or whatever we might decide at that time.
If there aren't any issues, uh, we'll get a ladder, a letter requesting a recommendation drafted up.
Yeah, I I like this and I I, I mean, I think one of the biggest things that I had when we talked about this first time was just the. Quickness and the brumpness of just shutting it off, and so this gives us, you know, a ramp up period as well as of. If it has to get shut down, I guess, so.
And thanks to both of you for following up on that. A lot of details, I couldn't believe the list when they were showing us of all the things that get noticed, I could not believe it.
So just for my benefit, I I suppose you'll have to work with legal to get an ordinance amended, or have you already done that?
No, uh, because most of these are um, would be part of the zoning ordinance or of the development code, well, it'll have to go through the planning commission. So it'll be a little bit more than than just working with legal to get an ordinance.
Great.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you. Up next, um, Janine, you wanna talk to us a little bit about the updated snow, snow pile parking ordinance? I did get a chance to read that, I don't know if everybody had a chance to.
Sure. So um. Appreciate the administration being kind of proactive, they had called me. I don't know, when it was at Monday morning, I I guess, and said, hey, we're having this meeting this afternoon. Um, have you got any input for us? And I said, oh, I actually we do. So I sent them the notes that Angela and Ken had put together and also uh, the information that I'd put together from other jurisdictions. And uh, with the idea that it seemed like, generally speaking, no one liked the. Pretty much all the time. You know, between November first. Um, and so this is what the language that um, they developed based on that input. So. Gonna put it up on the. Um, so I'll have Brendan put it up on the screen. Um, so no person shall park her vehicle upon a street after the time. Us, you know, a projected arrival of a snowstorm is coming based on uh, the weather bureau until the time the street's been plowed or. So that's one, when it's snowing or when a snow removal is apparent, so if he's, you know. The snow truck, the snowplow is following you down the street, you don't wanna park on the. Park on on the street, um, when there's accumulation of snow and these are all sort of taken from different, various different city. City ordinances and within twenty-four hours after a snowstorm. Uh, and then, uh, under the exemptions, I just made a note based on comment. Um, Councilmember White had made about whether or not it applied to the s- the state of Utah roads, so Harrison while. You know, twenty-fourth, uh, Washington, um, and so they don't, and so they just clarified in the exemptions that it doesn't. Uh, apply to roads controlled by the state, uh, any street that's been designated by the mayor. To be exempt or other properties that have no driveway approach. Would be also be exempt, so. I don't know if that meets your criteria. Um, if you have any other concerns or comments?
I've got a couple of questions, but I do, I really appreciate the administration, thank you for um, looking at it and taking some of our comments into consideration and taking into consideration that. Incoming council members, so they were able to also provide feedback. Um, I did have a couple of questions here that I took note of, um. I guess I was wondering about, um, I have to look back, it says. You know, when snow is forecast, is that, it, you know, I know that there, we're citing a specific source, which I really appreciate, because I think before it was a little bit. Nebulous about what that meant. Um, but I guess I just wonder about that and I didn't know if anybody else had concerns about that at all. Forecasting.
I I I think that's. Making an assumption that everybody's gonna look at the National Weather Bureau. And I'm not sure anybody does really, but but maybe their, our news reporting people do. Maybe that's good enough. My my. My concern, I guess, I I I wouldn't raise it all the way to a concern, but my question was. Uh, last week when we talked about this, it has administration got some reason that they proposed. You know, November fifteenth, uh, March thirtieth, why that was an important thing? Is it an enforcement thing? Cause if if this is going to make it unenforceable some reason. I'm not wild about it if there's some good reason, so.
Come on up, thank you, and thanks so much for.
Took that out, oh, sorry. So you'll notice in this version, we actually took the um, November first through March fifteenth out.
Right.
So that is now.
But you were still kinda wondering.
Put it in there for a reason to begin, I wondered what the reason was.
Well, sometimes when they, when the newscasters predict uh, snow coming, it's not always correct, so it's kind of easier just to. Pick a time of the winter time, and that's what it was for.
Yeah, and I do appreciate how it says after the time projected of the projected arrival, cause. Then if it's after that time, then it maybe it is snowing, and so that makes it more apparent as well, but.
And they, and they kinda broke it down here, so it says, A, then they they do the uh, the forecasted time or you're watching for snow. Or snow accumulation, things like that, they kinda break it down into different categories. Yes.
Yeah, no, and I do appreciate that very much.
I just wanted to add, uh, and you brought it up, the reason we originally did that was for simplicity. It's just easier that this block of time, no one parks on the streets. Um, that's the way it is in my neighborhood, but also for the reason you listen, not everyone watches the weather. And a lot, some people don't even know a storm's coming. Uh, some people watch the weather like hawks, but. Uh, that way it just made it to where even if you didn't know, or if it was a poorly forecast storm, which we've had our share of. Um, you know, everyone was safe and it was, it was simple.
Yeah.
And we were trying to keep everything simple, just so it wasn't so confusing to our residents.
Another thing to consider, we also looked at the exemptions, you you noticed that um.
It's in your email, I'm sorry, Marsha, it's in your email, from Janine, yeah. So sorry, did you, I apologize, go ahead.
Yeah, we mentioned the the exemptions as well, the state roads. Um, the uh, off-street parking, we added that as well, or to properties with no driveway approaches. As well, that way, uh, we're trying to.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I totally appreciate, the only question I had about that one, to properties with no, no driveway approach. I realize there's many ways you can try to figure out if that car belongs to that residence, I mean, either their registration or um. Maybe their driver's license, I don't, I don't know how you do it, cause I'm not that person, but. I guess I wonder if enforcement would have to be the one to come out and try to figure out if that car was from that property, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I just wonder about that, that might be confusing, so we'd have to get an officer out, they already have a call rate that's very high. Or having an officer come out to try to verify if a car is part of, you know, parked in front of a house that doesn't have a driveway approach. And of course, I don't know, I just, I wondered about that.
Yeah, yeah, it would be law enforcement that would go out there and verify all that, and then, of course, we'd uh. Law enforcement wouldn't be aware of all this as well, and if it's a. A property that doesn't have a driveway and that, that car belongs to that property, then they could, you know, bypass that car.
So can I ask a, just a practical question, this is, this is. So if a, if a household has. Eight cars and three off-site. Or off-street parking spots, is that going to be a reason for their? Is that gonna be a a legitimate excuse, you're gonna say, look, that's a problem you guys caused, it's not a problem that the neighborhood caused. That, that's where I, I kinda wonder.
Well, a a lot of this is gonna depend on how serious of a situation it is, there's gonna be a lot of cars, we're gonna bypass, I mean, we're not gonna have. They're trying to get these rules clean, they're not gonna have time to stop and.
I know.
And call for every single car, this is gonna mostly focus on the areas that are causing a problem, something that could be an issue. Something that can cause an emergency, that's what we're gonna focus on, we're not gonna focus on the ones that. You know, that's really aren't a big issue.
You, you, you will have neighbors calling now that they're in ordinance. And they're mad at that neighbor that's got too many cars, they're gonna call you.
Yeah.
I I I just, I just know that's the way it works, you know, it's just how it happens.
For sure.
Does it happen that way, Chris?
For sure, I'm on, I also um. Kind of follow up on that, I guess, I just wonder, I mean, I know I'm probably the minority opinion here. But I guess I just wonder, especially about downtown, when people are living, there's a bunch of people living in the same house. Whether they're related or not, we won't get into that, um, and they don't have sufficient parking for the amount of cars that people have. Are we saying in here anywhere or anywhere explicitly that people can park on city property instead? We had had that discussion that people could use the park parking lot. Would the library be included, I mean, I'm just thinking, how many spots are at the golden hours right now, I don't know how many parking spots. But I can imagine just in the surrounding neighborhood, right around there, they could fill up that parking lot pretty quickly, so are we still saying that that's okay?
You know, right now, I don't know what kind of restricted parking they have, but I could look into it and see what like. You know, right now, I don't know what kind of restricted parking they have, but I could look into it and see what like.
You know, it was, you know, just in discussion last time, we were saying people could park at the park or at, you know, other parking lots.
I, I just expect people are going to find a way to, to comply if, if it becomes, if they get cited, you know? They're gonna say, well, where can I put my car?
Parking on city property, cause we did say before that it was, that was okay.
I, and I didn't notice if you, uh, gave a, a little bit of disclaimer that says, okay, you can park on your lawn or you can park over the sidewalk during this time, but not other times. Did, is that included in your rem- uh, remodeled ordinance?
We did look into that. The only problem, it gets kind of scary blocking that sidewalk. You know, and, and if you have someone in a wheelchair or a handicap person going by, they need the sidewalk open. So we kinda were discussing that, but for now, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
So, you guys don't have a way if, uh, this is intended to go after cars and people who are, um, abusing um, their, their freedom to park their cars on the street and it's creating problems for our crews? There isn't a way to flip this ordinance to go after those people and not punish all the citizens in Ogden or give the perception that perhaps it might be punished so that there might be um, um, you know, I mean, all this stuff that we're talking about raising us potential concerns or potential, that, did, did you guys think through that possibility at all?
Well, I think that's what this will do. It kind of fine tunes. If the old ordinance, there was a loophole in it where, you know, people could get away with that. Where this one, we could go after those ones that are abusing it and things like that. So that's what we're trying to do, fine tune this and kinda help us. And again, we're not gonna have time to, you know, go after every car that's parked there, just the ones that are causing problems, or we can see a potential emergency.
But it, just kind of following up on the comments from, uh, Councilmember higher, if, what, what, what would happen if, if people call and report, uh, cars parked during storms? What, what's gonna have, what's gonna happen at that, at that time?
Yeah, you know, i- it's, it's like any other service. We get calls in for garbage cans. We get calls for people parking in front of my house and they want something done. All we can offer is that we're gonna investigate it and look into it and make sure it's, it's legitimate and things like that. And that's what we tell them. We tell them, we'll investigate it. We can't, um, just go by what they say. And sometimes there's a legitimate reason why they're doing things, you know? So that's what we do. We investigate it all. We let the, the residents know when they call in.
Thanks.
Any other comments or concerns? And the only other comment I had is I was kind of, as I was thinking through it, and I think I mentioned this a little bit before, but I don't know, um, one inch in, on my street, on Jefferson Avenue is a little different than when there's one inch up on the bench. We know there's like another six inches coming up there and it might just stay very low, um, downtown. So I don't know. That seems a little bit low to me, but I'm not a, a snowplow, a person that does that regularly. Is there any way to increase that?
We actually have a, um, the ordinance does say, I believe it's four inches, but we thought with the one inch, it kinda gets the ball rolling. We're watching for this. And, and our crews know, they're aware. They're watching the forecast as well. We have our, um, standby crews that are at night. They're out monitoring the roads. We have people that monitor it before and they're watching. If it's a small, um, storm, they'll usually salt instead of plow. And they watch that kind of stuff. So that one inch is just to kinda get the ball rolling.
I guess I'm just thinking about, in my name, I'm, I'm just gonna speak from my own experience. If I wanna be a law-abiding citizen and follow all this, you know, one inch, I'm gonna try to find a different place to put my car. So that means they're gonna be possibly in the golden hours parking lot or in the library parking lot. And that, you're saying that's okay?
I'll, I'll look at the, I'll get with the Parks Department, make sure there's not a limit in there, but I mean, I think that's a great idea to look into, you know, and.
But I mean, as an individual citizen, do I go ask someone there if I park there or can I just park there? I just wanna make it clear to our residents if that's okay to do.
My guess is that it's posted that there's no overnight.
Right. That's what I'm saying. It's like, I need to know. And people will be parking there every night during the season. What is that?
I, I mean, who do, who would be enforcing the golden hours parking?
Well, in the morning, when all the people come there to try to go to the rec center, they won't be able to, cause all the cars will be parked there. So I guess I'm just trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
Well, there, there is an issue there. There's people that have, uh, contracts to plow those parking lots also.
Right.
And they don't get plowed if there's a bunch of cars in there very well. And so.
So we're saying that's not an option.
I don't know. I, I'm just, you know, I brought it up when we first talked about this, just because I know that's what human nature is. You know, people are gonna just find somewhere to park their car.
Yeah. Cause we've eliminated a lot of the parking standards for downtown, so. I mean, I know you're saying, well, then those properties would be exempt. But then we need to understand which of those properties have been built without the parking order. I don't know, it just seems like I'm just getting ready for a lot of feedback and a lot of impacts to people. Um, especially, um, I'm just gonna speak for downtown, um, but it's just gonna be a really big challenge. And so I appreciate everybody trying to work, rework it, but I think it'll be a, a challenge.
Well, as we said before, we'll investigate some.
The, the, the parking lots, like golden hours and that, that, that's plowed by parks. It's not plowed by contract. And those parking lots, even that, like, you know, any of our parks that have, even, even like down at Fourth Street and that, they have a lot of parking areas, um, those generally aren't used during the winter, so it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
But those can be made an exception by the mayor. It's under this, uh, uh, ordinance. That could be one of his exceptions. You park in these parking lots. Um, but you gotta remember, each storm is unique. Everyone thinks it just snows everywhere. It doesn't. Uh, we have patterns coming in off the lake and a lot of times Shadow Valley gets hit. And some of, even up at Buse Drive doesn't. And it's, well, it's remarkable if Buse Drive doesn't get snow, but, but, um, you could get six inches on the bench and have a skiff down here, uh, on the flats. And that happens quite often. So these storms aren't gonna affect everyone equally. Um, and generally, once you get down, um, below Washington, a lot of times you don't have any snow.
Yeah, and so I guess that's what I'm saying. It's like, this is applying to the whole city. So when there's projected arrival of a minute snowstorm as forecast, so that, that would cover the whole city. So we're actually asking everybody to abide by this ordinance all the time.
Right. It's citywide and it'll be applied evenly.
Right. So it doesn't matter if there's less snow downtown than there is up on the bench. That's all I'm.
But I think as we go into this, we have to remember, we're gonna go into this as more educational than penalty. Uh, we're gonna try to educate people. If we have trouble areas, we're gonna go in and talk to them. Uh, you know, we'll have, we'll have some glitches at first, but it's gonna be applied evenly.
Okay.
Well, and two years ago, we only had ten storms. We went out ten times plowing. So that's gonna, you know, it's not gonna be as extreme as you think. Last year was an extreme year.
It's true, but I, I guess I'm, I don't mean to just repeat myself. This ordinance is saying, whether that snow falls or not, people are supposed to be following the ordinance. If it's forecast, then you're supposed to.
Uh, so, who, who is, can you help me understand the process on who's gonna, who's gonna make the call and report a car to the police, uh, you know, is it the driver, I'm assuming? Uh, is it gonna go through a chain of command? Uh, how, when is the car gonna get cited? How's that, how's that gonna work?
It's a chain of command. So the driver will call their supervisor. They go out and they try to get ahold of the homeowner first. This is common practice even now.
The, the supervisor or the?
And they'll go out and they'll knock on doors and try to get people to move the cars and things like that. And if it's too early in the morning, of course, they won't go knocking, but they'll, they'll come back later on when it's, when there's light out there and see if it's moved. So, once they can't get anybody, they'll kinda hit some of the other routes and as time goes on, they'll come back to finish that route. If that car's still there, then they, they start the process. If it's, if it's something that's kinda dangerous, that has to be done.
Is that, and I, and I'm sorry if I missed that. Was that spelled out on the ordinance, that process?
Uh, no, not the, the protocol of how we do it, no.
No? So, do you have an objection at putting that in the ordinance?
There, I believe there, let me see here, there was some.
Because to me, in, in my view personally, that solves all my concerns.
Yeah.
If it's done that way, the way you're talking about, to me, that really narrows it down to the cars that are really creating problems. A hundred percent, right? And, and, uh, it, it, at that point, I, I think it's an easy fix.
Okay. So you want protocol of how the step-by-step?
I, I'm pro- I'm, I'm one of seven. Just saying personally, my concern for the begin, from the beginning with ambiguity on these ordinance. And I understand when, when I'm hearing, we're gonna try, we're really only gonna go after certain groups and, or certain uh, cars are creating problems, et cetera. That's, that's very ambiguous, right? So, so that leaves the door open for, even if they just perceive issues and concerns to citizens, even if they're not real, in people's heads and in people's minds, they're gonna be real, right? I'm gonna be worried, I'm gonna be cited, I gotta go move my car, et cetera. If that protocol, that, that procedure you're talking about, if that's, if that's spelled out in the ordinance part of it, I, I think it's, I think it solves it. Which I, which I really think it's a great process to go and, and interact with the, with the owner of the car and say, hey, your car's creating a problem for us. If you don't move it, you're gonna get cited. Done.
We generally don't put administrative protocol in, in ordinance. Um, it's usually just a general policy of how we do business.
I, I understand that, but, but I think that you could, if this body decides that it should be in the ordinance, then it can be. So I, I, I understand that and I, I think that's, you know.
There, there's an age-old push and pull in public policy, getting back to my policy analyst days.
We're gonna have to go and.
Oh, oh, you're right.
So sorry, but go ahead, finish your.
It's a push and pull between flexibility and consistency. And what you're asking for is just the reality of what the resources would even allow. So I, I think naturally, that's what will occur. And you have the commitment of these guys. The challenges assuring the residents that that's the case.
Yeah, yeah. Alright.
Okay.
We ran out of time.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.